...other people have the right to be here and give their comments. Please leave. Thank you. Open up the time.
In case you just missed that, Mayor Evil will make the citizens. For those of you who are watching on the face of it, I guess what's happening is we are there really taking citizens out of the time.
I'm asking people who are not registered to leave because we are at your state by your capacity to come down here.
We're here with all MCCs.
We have, we just probably have to go. More people who have registered who are not here.
Will they be filled with them not here?
They can help get here in about ten minutes while the police sees. So please, please leave, okay? Would anyone like to voluntarily leave so we are at state capacity?
If the need arises, I will absolutely yield my seat to another person who feels the need to speak. I do want to do that.
Well, I have to leave the building because we're at capacity. We can't, uh, by state rules, we don't have, we didn't get in here.
So sir, if we're at capacity, why are all these seats open?
I'm sorry?
If we're at capacity, why are all these seats open? These seats are for the...
Absolutely.
We have people who have registered to be here.
Oh, I'm sorry. If they are not here yet, then we are not at capacity until those people are here.
Correct. We're going to be alone about ten minutes to get here.
So why not say stay in here until those people show up?
It's just your personal feelings.
But we are not at capacity.
We could have two hundred people in there. I would enjoy that, but, uh, I don't make the rules.
Don't go overboard. I'm sure there are a lot to figure out because it's at capacity right now.
So then if I'm understanding you, if the people come who have reserved your seat, then you, uh, four there will leave the building, right? Or some will leave the building.
I don't think they're coming. Forty minutes after.
There are eight seats or four?
Apparently about forty-four.
Nine.
Okay, uh, we'll get going. So I want to preface the meeting tonight, uh, same as we did last, uh, last Tuesday, that we're here to give comments, to take your comments and to, uh, hear your views and your suggestions. Uh, last week, after the meeting, uh, Caitlin Harley, she sent me an email and, uh, she had a suggestion in there to, uh, do a survey. So, uh, we're taking that suggestion and that'll be done. If you wish to submit questions that you think should be on the survey, I, I will welcome those questions. So you can submit them to my email at the City Building, uh, or any of the Alderman's emails. You can submit them to them, okay? So having said that, there again, let's be respectful of each other's opinions. We're here to, uh, there again, to take comment, suggestions, and, uh, hear your views on things. So, um, having said that, I guess I will put Reverend Hall on the spot again. Would you, uh, give us, lead us in a prayer?
Amen. Let us bow our head. Father, we just love you and we thank you for this time. But let us all tonight see the truth, the love and truth. And Father, we've grown into him and all things that we are right now. Father, us together, as I said last night, let us come and reason together. Father, let us really get our minds together. We understand that adversity and pain brings strength. And right now, even as the mayor, the councilman, everybody that's here, all families represented, Lord, we're gonna go before you and we're gonna smooth. If you go before us, please, Lord, and smooth off the path. Make any cricket play straight right now, Lord. But first and foremost, let us hear each and everyone's voices because everyone has a voice tonight. And let us be respectable in Jesus' name. But love, that's what it does. It covers all the two of city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Hall. I appreciate it. Okay, uh, same format is, uh, for those of you who were not here last Tuesday night, uh, same format. Uh, we've asked, uh, people to let us know if they want to speak. So, uh, Meacham up front will let me know who, uh, who wants to speak. You'll have five minutes to speak and then on the second go around, if you wish to speak again or continue on your, uh, what you'd like to talk about, then we will do that. So, question in the back?
Yes, sir. I'm just, I don't know who this young man up front here is, but I'm just wondering if he feels like he's, like, special or something. He doesn't have to wear a mask like the rest of us.
Everyone, I'm sorry I didn't make that announcement. We are social citizens here in the city, so if you would like to remove your mask, you're free to do so. Okay? So Meacham, who do we have first?
Mike Marvin.
Mike Marvin. Uh, we will bring the microphone to you. The microphone will be sanitized between people speaking using it, so, Mike?
So, I'm just, I'm hoping to go first. Uh, but, you know, I will, I have a couple things to prepare. Um, I think that one of the things that, um, you know, I appreciate that we have this meeting, I appreciate, uh, that we're gonna do a survey. Um, I'm really, um, hopeful that this process is going to, um, result in some actual action. You know, we, we have to start somewhere and I think this is new to everyone in a, in a sense of, uh, we have young people, people of color, and young people of color, um, speaking, which we haven't had in this community, um, really in an organized way for a very long time. And, uh, so, um, I'm hopeful of a few things as we move forward. One of the things that, uh, I recognize is that, uh, one of the things that's gonna need to change in our community is actually the actions of white people because that's how things are gonna change. Um, and, you know, one of the things that I hope that the city looks at, Department looks at, is, you know, the consequences for people who are unnecessarily calling the police when a person of color walks through their neighborhood. Um, that's something I've heard over and over again. And, you know, um, I don't, you know, many of the people told me that is, you know, that the police will come and say, oh, I had to check up on you because somebody called me. But that's not necessarily on the police, but it's on the people who are calling reports. So is there a consequence for them, right? If they keep calling in these reports when there's actually nothing happened? Um, and, um, yeah, and so I will submit a couple of, uh, survey questions. I, I do think sometimes, um, you know, there's things that, uh, that we may assume about our community that are not necessarily true, you know, that there's people in the community who, um, who do not call the police when they should because they're afraid that things will get worse if the police come there and, you know, for whatever reason. So if we could get to some of the bottom of that and, you know, establish trust with those people, that would be excellent. And to also realize that, you know, people who have been oppressed for a long time are not necessarily gonna come to these meetings and grab your microphone. So, um, one of the things that I hope that you do, Mayor, and you, um, Charlie, is, uh, to go out to those communities and talk to them without the microphones on, without the cameras on, without the newspaper there. And you'll get a different sense. You'll get some different voices that are not necessarily at this meeting. You'll get, um, there's some very, um, disciplined and, um, smart people involved in this process and you ought to hear them even if they are not coming to your meeting. That's it.
Thank, thank you, Mike. Uh, those of you in the back, if you go ahead and take seats. So how many seats do we have left? Who's, uh, who's not occupied a seat? We got, well, listen, you have, uh, one standing, two standings, and we have to count for that. So that's, uh, that's the two ways. We have one, two, three that I see, three that I see. So...
There are three people over there at least.
Where's another one?
Oh, they're just standing outside.
So we have, we have three seats available. Is someone here?
So that's Leo's seat and that's Christine's. They're standing next to their seats. So there's one, two, three, four, five.
Yeah, I got the five.
And then there's an Alderman's seat there.
But he's walking around doing that.
He's here, no, he's a body in here, so...
Right, but are you counting four?
But I'd say people wise, we have, okay, we have Leo has to have, Leo's counted as a seat, right there. Christine's counted as a seat, so I see one, two, three.
There's five, Phil.
Where's the fifth one? Where am I missing?
There's a green one back there.
Okay, all right, we can have five people involved.
We could all sound off.
Okay, so next speaker, Meacham, when you get a chance there?
Um, Katie Ward.
Katie Ward?
Hi. Uh, I want to thank everyone for being at this meeting tonight, for the city for adding that this is a necessary first step. And I guess I will just ask a few questions to sort of give a groundwork for myself and for maybe other people. I wasn't here last time, but I did watch some videos and read some good feedback, so that was helpful too. Um, I'm interested in hearing from the mayor and the city council and police officers on how you are going about educating yourselves in the running of suspended racism, like what you already know, what you're reading and listening to, and how you are building your own sort of stamina for these conversations which can be challenging. And I guess my other question would be, um, after these meetings, and I guess even during these meetings, you know, what, what looks like is coming next at this moment? And how are you going to ensure that the voices of people in the community who are marginalized and oppressed are at the table that is making decisions when the decision-making comes down the line? That's all. Thank you.
I like to answer part of that. Um, we're learning like everybody else and, uh, we're hoping that the, uh, that what comes out of these meetings is that we get a, uh, the, uh, a good idea throughout the whole community on everybody's feelings. And after getting, we're, we're in the, right now, in order to do anything, you gotta collect data. So that's what we're doing right now. And when we collect the data, the data will be analyzed, uh, then we'll move forward with forming a committee. And we'll look at, that committee will help, they can look at the data that we've analyzed or that we have and they can help analyze it. And then we'll come up with a plan, a community-wide plan. So that's a short answer. Uh, the first part of your question, what are we doing about, uh, you know, we're, we're in the learning phase right now of a lot of things. There's a lot going on in this country. There's a lot going on in this community. And we're, we're listening and that's what we're here for. We're here to listen. We're here to understand. We're here to learn. Chief, uh, Charlie, did you like touch on some things that we've, we've already been doing in the police department?
Thank you. So to answer your question, uh, echo what Mayor had said specifically about that, although we haven't had a campaign about that, uh, until a couple of months ago, uh, on, around here, probably multiple places. Uh, I've been the police chief for just a little over five years and I can tell you what I've done since taking over as police chief and what we currently do. Uh, so one of the first things that we did, and some of this will apply to tonight, some of it all, uh, one of the first things we did was we began to drug test all the officers. Everybody gets drug tested. It's a random, I already got initially drug tested, every single person, including myself, and then there's a random drug test. Then we began, when we hired new people, we began doing not only background investigations, which we've always done, but we now do drug testing on new people as well as we do psychological screenings on people, uh, two-part psychological screening. So we do everything we can as far as that goes to make sure we're not hiring somebody that has some kind of problem we're not aware of, that you normally wouldn't know. And so we try to do that to make ourselves a more confident person when we're hiring that doesn't have some deep-seated problem that's gonna come out later. Uh, as far as screening goes, we, not too awful long ago, last year, 2019, I sent somebody to defensive tactics school. Uh, so for the first time only, a police as a defensive tactics instructor, we began teaching our people more techniques and more, uh, procedures to not only keep themselves safe, but to also limit any potential injury or death to somebody else. So we started doing that. Also, in conjunction with the New York State Department last year, we began doing the escalation training. So we sent a, uh, instructor to the escalation school and last year we began doing the escalation training, which is new for us. We, you know, monitor everything, uh, policies. So when I came in, our policies were extremely antiquated, hadn't been looked at in years. Most officers hadn't even seen them in many, many years. So we revamped the entire policies. We got rid of some old outdated ones, created a bunch of new ones. I tried to create many new policies that we wrote in accordance with New York State standards and accreditation standards so that at some point, if we were ever credited, the policies would be appropriate. I also put in place a electronic system that mandates that each officer has to read and sign off on every policy at least once a year. Uh, so basically every week, that officer read his emails, get the policy, is read it, is to sign off. Some of you have tasks to ensure that they've read the policy, so they know what's in. And that compliance and everybody is reasonably as often as we can read the policies. Previously, they wrote a policy, they read it once, and they threw it in the file, nobody ever looked at it again. Uh, we recently, as you probably are all well aware, uh, just started our body game program. That's something we tried to do over a year ago, but we were, it was too full. We, we got, uh, the grant, which was great, to save the city, uh, fifty-six thousand dollars, but the grant process to public government is quite extensive and it takes a long time. And it took us a year before we were actually able to get the cameras and train the officers and put them on their, on their uniforms. So we now have body games. Everybody's being recorded. Uh, we have GPS units on the cock, we see phone calls recorded. And everything that these guys are doing during the day, during their shift, is being monitored and recorded, one way, two-way, or no. To be honest, to know what's going on now, I couldn't be happier that we have them out here, the film which we have six months ago. At least we have them now. So from my perspective, I think we've come a long way from where we were five years ago. Uh, our training is as best we can. We're doing everything, I think, in the right way, modernizing the department, bringing up the speed, and I think we've done quite a bit in that short period of time.
Thanks, Chief. Who's the next speaker, Meacham?
Almeida.
Not yet.
Christine Alomar.
I am actually here to give my five minutes to a person of color. Already back here for four hundred years, white people have had the microphone and I'd like to give it to, um, the Senator Cleveland.
Thank you, Peter.
First, I'd like to thank you for being here. Second, Mayor, uh, you say that you were doing this survey to see if the community feels like we need to go over to have a board.
Can you hold the mic up a little closer?
Is that that?
Yeah.
Okay. So you're saying that you're doing this survey to see if the community thinks that we need to have this, uh, board put together to even, to know if we want to have this board? That's not what the governor said, right?
No, no, that's, that's not what the survey is for. We will have a board, the governor has ordered, uh, as my executive director, my executive ordered, uh, we will have a board to do with the police aspect of it, okay? So we will, we will have a community board, awesome.
So what's the survey?
The survey would be so that we can reach out to as many residents and taxpayers of Olliam to get their views.
To get their views on exactly what?
On the questions that we come up with on the survey. Whom is? The topic is, the topic is racism in Olliam and, uh, the, uh, police, uh, things to do with the police department.
Can you tell me who we are? And I keep saying we determine it. Who's we?
The people of Olliam.
So, so the peo-, you're gonna give a survey to the people of Olliam to determine if they agree with each other in this survey, like, of what?
We're trying to gather data, okay? And what, the same way as we're having these meetings, we're listening to everybody here, uh, it was just said by Mike Marvin that some people will not come to meetings, some people will not speak in public. So we're gonna try to get a feel from people who, that group of people who will not come to meetings, who will not speak in public, but still will be able to give a feel on a survey sound.
I'm glad that you said that because what he actually said was people were oppressed for so long that some people won't come to meetings and stuff? So you need a survey on how they feel or do you already know how they feel? I mean, this is back on a, Michael Luther King was marching, you know, that is, right? But he was marching back there, but the same thing we're talking about right now. So what you're trying to tell me is that if you keep falling back and then you keep doing the same thing over and over again, like the silent masses is what you call them, let them determine the fate of me, right? That's what's supposed to happen? Give a survey to find out if it's okay if the police, I'm not saying this happens in Olliam, but this is what we're talking about. If it's okay with the police to be able to kill me? That's what, that's what this survey?
Yes.
So, so everybody's talking about no, 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 no. But what you, what you're not understanding is we've been going through this for how many years? You said last meeting, right? But you didn't understand what the problem is. If you don't understand what the problem is, are you really qualified to be mayor? The chief, the chief says in his report in the paper that, uh, the, he's not allowed to, I don't, I'm, actually, let me ask you a few questions, sir. What laws aren't you allowed to enforce? Oh, well, why would you say in the paper that you're not allowed to enforce the laws? And this is gonna get worse until you guys are allowed to enforce the laws.
Uh, I don't remember that poll, but I think it was related to this deal with where people are just being released out of the city.
Okay, so what, do you, do you, do you need me to send you the article sometime? Like, we can sit down and talk about that article because there's a few things in there that I would like to talk about, you as the chief of police, like...
I'd be happy to try.
I'm glad that you said that. Oh, now, Mr. Mayor, this survey, like I said, did I ask who is going to determine the board, the, this board that's with, with the mayor, you, you, the chief of police and citizens? Who determines who's on it?
It would be myself and, uh, community leaders and, uh, the county council.
Who's community leaders? What do you, what do you mean by that?
We have several members of this community who are coming forward as leaders.
Do they look like me?
Yes.
I'm glad to hear that. Now, you don't get to determine who those leaders are, correct?
No, I don't.
Okay. That's all I needed to hear. Now, on the point of you not determining who are those leaders, right? Who gets to determine that?
I guess, uh, well...
The survey?
No, no. I think you have people coming forward now, in particular, uh, you got, there's several groups that are forming on Facebook, okay? And there's leaders that are coming out of that. There's leaders in different groups around the city that, uh, we'd like to hear from. And, uh, I'm not gonna pick who's, who's, uh, leading your particular, uh, I guess group's a bad word to use, but your particular, uh, movement. Okay, that's a good word. Your particular movement, yeah. It's not up to me to pick who's, who's leading your movement. It's up to the, for people who are, if they're, uh, leading that movement. There is no leaders. We're a community fighting for our lives. That's what we are. Concerned citizens of America, okay? There is no leader. You don't need a leader to do what's morally right. If you feel that you do it, that I can understand. Coming from a person who gets out of his bed every morning, goes outside and looks at a rebel flag, that might not mean nothing to you. And you're a community citizen. The house that has the rebel flag across the street from you used to be owned by a black man who flew an American flag. But not today. It has the Confederate flag. You don't understand what the power is. How do you rest of my time?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Who's, who's next?
Hi, I'm Rick Snyder. I am a member of the, um, Bahai community of Olliam and the principal teaching of Bahai faith is the oneness of mankind. And, uh, with all of its implications of social justice, racial justice, uh, access to, uh, education, um, just, just to name a few, I would like to suggest that, um, our public schools would do very well to teach courses on racism, the same kinds of, um, workshops that we used to run here in the area, sometimes here, sometimes in Salamanca, where we find out about white privilege, we found out, find out about institutionalized racism, which is certainly a reality, and, uh, other sorts of stuff. Right in the schools, so we're no longer victims of ignorance. Uh, when I was a kid, we never, ever talked about things like that, but we certainly, we certainly need to do that. One thing that concerns me a great deal, I'm very glad to see that, um, most of America is very much in favor of reforming our institutions and making sure that some of these things, uh, that have been going on don't go on anymore. Um, I would like to suggest that, um, we would need a two-pronged approach. Over the years, uh, I was talking to Almeida not too long ago at the, uh, just a couple of days ago, actually, at the Race Unity Workshop, where they did the, uh, program on, uh, all of these, uh, African Americans who have lost their lives at the hands of the police in sometimes very shocking ways. Um, we remember, um, back in the sixties, when reforms did indeed... Um, we remember, um, back in the sixties, one reforms did indeed sometimes make it through legislation and so forth, but without personal transformation, without the education of individuals, we are not going to see them as lasting changes. They are going to mutate into, uh, even more ugly expressions of, uh, racism. If we don't do the both, personal transformation and institutional transformation, we're gonna find ourselves, like somebody else earlier said, in exactly the same place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicole Mowal.
Nicole?
Um, I did have more questions, but I'm not expecting answers to them tonight. There's questions coming out there and I guess recommendations. First, um, I, I am part of Race Unity Circle of Oleen, so these are questions that we've come up with as, together as a group. Um, they do relate to two things with regards to the police department, and the first would be, um, something that Cory spoke to you probably about, um, how, how law enforcement is trained in our area. So, I know that's not something right now that the department's prepared to speak to, but specifically related to, um, discrimination, specifically related to first the equity of inclusion, things like implicit rights training, those are the things that are necessary, um, for a long time. And I definitely cannot say any of this as a, a, a shaming, because I don't think that anybody, um, outside of small groups were thinking about these things, um, in terms of how to take action necessarily, um, before a few months ago. And I think that that's something that lately in this community has been happening, but I do think it's something that needs to start, um, and I think it's something that needs to be publicized. So, if the answer to, um, we have not done that training yet, um, is the answer, fine, but what is the plan to move forward? Because perhaps the last time any, um, law enforcement or anything along those lines, anybody's had training, um, was in a police academy, understood, but what's the plan now that we are better? How are we, now that we do know better, how are we going to do better? Um, and I would just encourage, um, the department, uh, the city to publish the plan for moving forward, even if the answer is we haven't done this yet, because that is honesty, and honesty is necessary, transparency is necessary. Um, the other thing I would say is with regards to recruitment, this is not just on law enforcement, this is at all levels, um, in our area. This is not just about city council, this is not just about, um, our, our city police, it's about, um, sheriff's department, troopers, um, our hospital board, our board of directors, or other nonprofits in the area. Um, there is very little representation of, um, Black and Indigenous people of color, um, in those leadership roles, very little. And that doesn't mean that one or two people, um, of color are going to, you know, be the only thing that matters, and I don't want to, I certainly don't want to tokenize anyone, but people need to see themselves reflected in the highest levels and at all levels of leadership. It can't just be in the, so, it can't just be, um, in the intro level, right? It can't just be at the lowest levels that we're bringing in, it has to be at all levels. Um, so that means hard work, and it means, um, some of us that do have agency, that we are, um, working to help others that maybe don't feel that, um, to empower people to come forward and take the risk and, um, try to be, uh, someone who wants to be a police officer, try to be someone who wants to run for city council, um, who wants to be on board of directors. We have to use, that's all of us in here, have to use our power, um, to make those things happen for others, so, not, um, trying to, again, shame anyone, it's more so that now that we know better, there needs to be a change better.
Leo. Leo, you're next. Leo, you want me to hold back for you?
I have it.
Oh.
I find it incredibly disturbing that after people made the effort to come to the last meeting, you literally looked in our face and said, "I need to talk to somebody else." You looked in our face and you said, "I need to talk to this island majority," so I'd really like to know who this island majority is, 'cause I feel like it's folks that look like you. And that's sad, because right now you're playing a game with us. You're playing a long haul game. We already have a survey. You know how long it took us to get a survey made by someone with a PhD? Twenty-four hours. White people have had the microphone for far too long, so I'm taking five, my five minutes to read the stories of the people of your area, because you're not just, you're just not sure if it happens here, so I'm gonna read these, and they're gonna be completely unedited, and I'm not going to apologize for the content, because this is what's happening in Oleen at the moment. Unfortunately, they're still fucking breathing, fucking pill-pained babies. Thought that was a good way to start. Get the water hoses out. Ten white kids that have no idea, hypocrisy pervading. Maybe if you stop breaking the law, you wouldn't be murdered, off, off, Rhianna Taylor. Stupid, brainless idiots with police protection. Good, at least I'm not out there looking for attention. Get a fucking job. White power. Nigger. 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 Yes, it came out that many times, and I'm editing it to save the time. We're wasting our tax dollars right now. You should burn down the welfare office, that'll fucking eat 'em. Start shooting, problem solved. These folks, by the way, these all came from Oleen residents within the past month on public forums. So, when you say you don't know there's a problem, it tells me you don't care enough to look, because we've put out at least ten videos at this point, and I tagged your office in it. So, don't play me like you haven't seen them. I tagged your office, I tagged the Cataract County Legislature, I tagged Oleen Police Department, and I tagged every single alderman that I could. You know who got back to me? John and Lena. Totally not here. Fucking stupid shit, it's fucking racist and offensive, they all need to go to hell. Maybe you'd feel better if they came to your house and stole your stuff or tried to kill your animals. Wake up, it's not about race, those idiots are being offensive. This is getting really old. Wap, stop fucking crying, get over it. Okay, I'm not lying to you, I can't read the rest unless they get more disgusting from here. But it's highly disturbing to me that you say you don't know if there's a problem, because the whole community, Black people and white people are telling you there's a problem. It's not an "if," and I'm sick of hearing "it," because it's a fucking problem. And you saying it's not, uh, we don't, we don't know if it's a problem, that is a privileged white opinion, because you don't have to get up every day and be a Black person in this society, and neither do I. I can't even know it. I can't know it, but I'm willing to admit that it exists. My son, who is a junior in college now, recent graduate of our school system, just told me this story yesterday. He was in school, and he and his friend both wore bandanas to school. My son, the only gang he has ever been a part of is National Honor Society. He's never been in trouble, I literally looked at him and he cried. The school district, the school system, the teachers, came to my son, sitting next to his white friend, wearing a bandana, and they said, "You need to go to the office." So, my son went to the office and they said, "We heard some reports of gang activity, you have to take your bandana off." The white person wore their bandana all day. I heard another story within the past forty-eight hours about another young person of color in our community. They were walking across the street, minding their own business, an old white man in a truck told them that they could cross, that she could cross the crosswalk, and the man stepped on the gas when she was walking. That's what it's like to be a white person in Oleen, from their voice, but this is not my voice, this is what they're telling me. You wanna know why? Because I asked. It's not for, there doesn't need to be a survey if there's racism. Have you been American ever? Sustained racism is integrated into the fabric of American society, and Oleen is better than that. We have people here that are better than that, and we are on the precipice of moving forward or dying out. There's a saying in the church, which is the place that I come from, so if you wanna talk church, we can go to Chupacool on that too, because there's four hundred verses about taking care of immigrants, and there is like four about homosexuality, about doing what you should do with your taxes. Let's take care of people, okay? Because that's the Bible, right? So, don't play. There's a saying in the church, there's only, you're only ever one generation away from extinction, and that's where Oleen is right now, because as a dumb person, I'm right now deciding if I can stand being here for the rest of my life, because I wanna be a part of the community. And there is more good out than there is hate, but I've got seeing it reflected in our local legislature and in our, in our legislative officials, stands a few of them. There is a problem, and until the great Black Lives Matter can roll off a door, white come and enter, there is no equality.
Yes. Yes!
Thank you. Who's next?
Tyrone Law.
Tyrone?
I'm Tyrone Law, nine oh one, um, Oxford Avenue, Oleen, New York, pastor, uh, harbor, supposedly now a man in the middle, um, middle of a breezy, and, uh, let me, there, there is a problem, there, there's many problems, more to order than to justice. I truly believe we want order right now rather than justice. Let's tonight keep the main thing, the main thing, and that's racism and law, police reform. Let's not miss the mark of this moment of change. This is the window opportunity. I'm a pastor, and let me just minister to you a little bit, and then we'll, we'll move on. There were five hundred people on the day of Pentecost that were supposed to be in the upper room when the Holy Spirit came in. There were, there were five hundred, but only one hundred and twenty were there, so that meant that three hundred and eighty people thought that there were more, something more important to be in there, just like our faith-based community right now. I don't know if there's any other pastor in here, but if this is a faith-based community, where's our faith-based pastors and our ministers? We got a lot of work to do. Leo was exactly right as far as Black Lives Matter. Mayor, they, not that they just want, they wanna hear, we wanna hear, but just understanding and knowing that there is a problem here, and as we move forward and come together, because nothing else is going to matter unless we come together. Racism is a human rights issue, not a political issue. Racism is a heart issue. Change your heart, and the world will change. That's why the Lord put a mandate on this world, clean hands and a pure heart. So, until we get clean hands and a pure heart, we're riding a bike with no chain. Dr. Martin Luther King, history will, will record that one of the greatest tragedies of this period of social transition will not be the violence or a violent act of bad people, but, listen to me, but the applauding silence of good people. It's time to speak. This too shall pass. Let's throw that out the window, if we're handling it. Let's make it pass, and the way that we're gonna make it pass is by coming together and reasoning together and lifting up our major together, instead of tearing them down together. And the thing that we have to do, and if we don't do that, we don't move. Let's teach our young children about Black history. I think that's where the Bible says, "Get wisdom, get knowledge, but at all far getting, get understanding." I got a story, I'm a barber, I got a story in that, uh, the other day, there was a seven year old white kid that came in the shop. He was seven years old, he jumped in the chair and said, "What's up, man?", and then I said, "You, that's what's up?", and then he looked at me, he said, "I heard you guys get the thug haircuts, haven't?" And I said, "We sure do." And I said, "You're a polite young man." He said, "My mom teaches me that." Oh, my goodness. So, the thing about it is, is it has to be taught at home. He looked at me, he's never came in a barber shop, he said, "The last haircut I got sucked, but this haircut is great." What am I trying to say? He's really got taught at home, so that's where it's gonna start. Ofront people cannot remain ofront forever. It's time to listen to the millennials and the jinglies. And if we don't, we don't fail. Law covers a multitude of sin, and if there's no love, we fail. This is biblical, this is standing on the truth. And one thing, and I, I'm just the middle man, I'm just a man of reason. The church, honey, has to be here just by some type of reason, but if we got, we got problems, go to the mayor's office, and say, "His office is open." Let's talk about it, let's reason together. Only, like I said earlier, there's pain, there's struggle, but then there's, there's progress. If we're leaders, stand up and let's lead. What, a few of the things, I'm maximizing my time, I'm gonna go 459. Unacting Dr. Martin Luther King's letter for Birmingham Jail, April sixteen, nineteen sixty-three, he was like the prison opossum. And, and, and stuff like here, Dr. King is frustrated, "I'm tired," May twenty-third, twenty-twenty, Black folk, we're tired. I wanna tell you one thing, readers are readers. If the white people don't know what we're going through, get a book, it's called Surrender White People, The Abundant, okay? And that is talking about the shoes that I have to put on every day, and I have to drive my car. I got another story, I got stories all day. And the next story is, I jumped out of the car at seven thirty this morning, and seven thirty this morning, there was another Black guy that jumped out with me. He had a nice car, my car was all right, but the thing about it was is, when I drove by, I, I specifically looked at the faces of the way I jumped out of my car, and if somebody was scowled at me, or, "Ah!", I was like, "Whoa, wait a minute, I'm just jumping out of my car." But they saw two Black guys, "Oh, this is serious, this is real." Two Black guys with fairly decent cars, I said, "I wonder what's running through their mind." I really wonder what's running through their mind right now. Has it been fair? No, it hasn't. In two thousand and ten, I came to the barber shop, I opened a barber shop here in Oleen, blessings to the mayor, I think it was David Wicklow at the time, I came here, but I don't know what police officer called the mayor of Cornell, which was my dad's best friend, and they asked him, the mayor of Cornell, "Who is this guy coming in here?" They know my parents raised me the right way, I've never been a barber in Oleen, and that's real. And the reason why that's real, because I had a good record, and then all of a sudden they said, "Okay, he could come in." And this is real stuff, this really happens every day, but until you understand our shoes and say that Black Lives Matter is that the issue is here of racism and move forward, that's all we want to do, and that's all we wanna do is move forward. And then when Martin Luther King, that's it.
Does anybody wanna yield their time to the Reverend?
Come on, yield some time. Just a little bit, just a few more minutes. Thank you, thank you, uh, mayor, appreciate it. Dr. Martin Lu- Lu- Luther King wrote that letter, he didn't write it on paper, he, he wrote it on toilet paper, and he said, "I'm tired, I'm frustrated." All these years later, you know what my mom said this morning? I said, "Mom, I wanted to speak at the, the Tom Hall meeting." You know what she said? "I'm tired, I'm frustrated." When is there gonna be a change? The church, we need to stand up, because if we don't have any more, uh, other faith-based community people pastors coming here, it's not gonna last, because whatever you do for Christ is gonna last, everything else does it. That's simple. If we are going to fix this, this is going to take a courageous effort from who? Right folk, to say, "How can we help?" One more story, I was gonna do a, a wedding at Alumage, and this white couple, off seventy to seventy-five, they stopped me, they said, "Hey, how are you?", I said, "I'm fantastic", and I'm going down there. And I'm going down into the woods, I don't know what they're going to do. I'm looking like, uh-oh. But then I'm going down into the woods and they said, thank you for everything that you've done. And we're sorry for everything that we've done. Then I wanted to hug them and say, thank you so much. That's all, just a bit, if there's a problem in self-reflection, in my closing, Killer Mike, anybody know the rapper Killer Mike? Said, white, white person, white folk, retire from fixing your problems. Do your own work. Talk to people. Because there was an article in the paper. Okay? Kingsbury, that's my family. He was after my cousin in the car with a gun. He was the one dancing all over the Oleand, New York. Why did the police officer for six years go and say, hey, how you doing, must move forward? What is that, getting to know each other? He was here for six years. So when a problem happened and it's time to de-escalate it. Kingsbury could have looked and said, oh man, I know you, what's going on? Put his gun down. Oh, it wouldn't have to go that way. But the final result of everything, Mayor Martin Luther, the final, final is result of everything is that nobody got hurt. Everything was okay. The solution was solved. He's in jail, my cousin's alive. We're going to went to a funeral. Couple days from now. She crying on my shoulder. I want to tell everybody, get to know who's in your community. The barber shop is a hub. I'm going to tell you one thing, everybody comes in here. But guess what? I just love God, I love people. And I don't care what color they are, red, yellow, black and white, they're all precious in its sight. Jesus loves the little children of the world, thank you.
Thank you Reverend. Who do we have next, Mr.?
Amy Farber personally wanted to speak. I gave my time.
Thank you.
Caitlin Harvey?
Of course, I actually want to do that.
You, if you still would like to speak, there's a few minutes in there, I think.
I'm, I'm, thank you.
Okay.
Much more eloquent than I could ever be. Hey guys, I should probably turn that on. There we go. Um, so, hi, I'm Kate Harvey, uh, your tummy's timely. Um, I'm the idiot who suggested the survey. Um, so here's a really great opportunity for me to acknowledge some more privilege. As a very educated person, my first thought was, holy crap, we need data because we have to prove what's going on. We don't have any, you know, we're looking at our city leaders and they're saying they're not sure there's a problem. So my first thought is, I know how to get information and I know how to get a problem. Like I know how to solve that and I know how to present it to the people who are here. Um, when I started looking at information, I saw that Oleand General Hospital applied it in a big health disparity information and out of everyone who responded in the county, there were two people of color of everybody. And I got freaked. Um, that is like, money comes from data, right? Like this is how we get education, we get it through data and money. And I said to the mayor, and I'll pull up my email. Um, basically that we, we need information and we also need to reach people in ways we've never reached them. I was thinking about what you said specifically regarding reaching out to only faith-based communities to engage people in the important discussion of reform in our community. I want to be sure that those who do not attend a house of worship are able to be reached. So I have a few thoughts regarding how we may be able to reach out to our community. Yes, churches are a great place to start conversations, especially regarding morality and social change. But I think Oleand is able to do more and reach a greater number of people. My thought is this, if we want to reach the true silent majority, we need to talk to people in unconventional places. Churchgoers are not the silent majority and neither are the people speaking at town hall meetings. Typically speaking, if someone does have a community or a congregation they feel comfortable with, they do have conversations within those groups and feel supported enough to speak out when asked. These aren't your silent people. I'm honestly not sure who the silent majority are, probably the seventy-five percent of the people who didn't vote in the state council. But they have been silent up until now because we've been using unconventional habits. So we need to try something new and more broad. And I'll start to summarize. In addition to seriously utilizing and cultivating pages on various social media platforms, that was my first recommendation. I suggest working with local businesses to offer out anonymous paper or electronic surveys to get a link, lay of the land so to speak. We should be reaching out to doctors and counselors offices. Daycare agencies, Head Start, the Y M C A, see if patrons there have thoughts on anything that may need to happen. Reach out to the food canteries, Directions for independent living, in tandem, foundations for change, the Oleand Public Library, and cares. Quite often, people have a wait, it's a good time to get their opinions. We should be using hair salons, barber shops, coffee shops, grocery stores, takeout lines, anywhere where you can wait in line. We have farmers markets. We should be using these places to take reservations for town hall meetings. If people aren't willing to do a survey, we need to have these conversations. If it's really important to you to reach out and reach the people you've never heard from, you have to do something you've never done. Thank you for your time. So yes, the survey was mine. Yes, I'm now very much recognizing how privileged of a statement that is for me to say that, yes, a survey is going to be a great idea, because you're right, there are people who have been saying there are these issues for a freaking number. And if the leadership isn't listening to the people, the only other thing that I could think of is maybe they'll listen to data because that's the way that white educated people are presented with information for us to understand things. So I think that we can do better. Um, I also did help create another survey because there's still a part of me that feels like that is going to be helpful at some point. And I've got some really disgusting responses about experiencing racism, experiencing, um, some issues with feeling comfortable with regards to your sexual orientation, gender identity, race, country of origin, language spoken at home. It's pretty awful. Um, but I do want to just do a quick show of hands, particularly for city council members, but also if anything else feels the need, go for it. How many of you, um, have read or purchased White Fragility? Okay, it's a New York bestseller. Um, How to Be an Anti-Racist? Okay? Um, that's White Fragility listed again. So you want to talk about race. Me and white supremacy combat racism, change the world, and become a living ancestor. The new Jim Crow. Elanquin's Rage. Reproductive Injustice. Okay, and then I think that somebody else said one more, and I missed it. I don't remember what it was, but somebody else said a book.
You've read the, is it a record of white?
Yes! White People's Friend or Friend?
D L U.
Say it again?
D L U.
Yes, the book by D L U, has that anyone else read that? Okay, so it sounds like everybody has a lot of education that they can do. There are copies at W T Hair. Um, also copies for the busy people's version of white supremacy, or of, um, oh gosh, what about? White Fragility, there we go. So we all have work that we can do, and this is going to be a bunch of white people making changes, but it looks like everybody's got some more. Thanks.
Do you want to put a list of those books somewhere so we can all see?
Yeah, absolutely. I just did the quick Google search, but yeah, absolutely. Absolutely, yeah, anti-racist books. There are several, but I would be more than happy to.
And a number of them are available at Oleand Public Library, and even if they aren't physically available, you can get them through the app.
Oh, and audible.com has a free, um, like a free one audiobook, your first free read. Um, and White Fragility is on it. You can download it for free with your Amazon app.
Thank you. Who's?
Hi, Malone.
I'm sorry?
Hi, Malone.
Hi.
Yeah, I got one, yeah. Now, Mayor, you should understand that there's nothing personal against you. You're by nothing, Oleand, you know, whatever you do. Now...
I'm sorry, Ty, please.
There's nothing personally against you.
I understand that.
You just happen to be the mayor.
I understand, I got big shoulders.
But we're going to hold them guys responsible too, because they've been in power for a little while also. And although they're on the right side of things now, where have they been? So, not only are we going to have discussions and meeting with you, but we are going to get our young people out there to vote. I know you guys feel like they don't have the votes to make these changes that they want. But I can promise you that I will do everything in my power, and there's other people that are going to do the same thing in their power, to get the young people out there to vote, to give the change that we need. If you really, and nothing against your survey, Mayor.
No, please.
But if you really need a survey to find out how to do what's morally right, isn't there something wrong with that? Pastor Hall said it starts at home. You're a little bit too old for your parents to be teaching you. You understand? So instead of trying to get these surveys, you are going to hear these people talking. Tell me what's going on. You heard, um, Leo read you this, the statements of your community, the silent majority. Can you explain what that means?
I can explain what my intent was, okay? Uh, kind of like what Caitlin said. You know, we need to get out to, and, and, and I'm, I'm out there, okay? Those of you, uh, many of you in this room have never even asked to come and talk to me about anything. Or come to my, I have an open door policy. You're more than welcome to come to my office or call me, I'll meet you somewhere, we can have a discussion. I've been out there, I've been out there for, since I've been mayor. But my intent was, and I guess there again, be probably a poor choice of words, but my intent was just what Caitlin is talking about in her email. Getting out to everybody out there. People in the grocery line, here, there, talk to them. See what their feelings are. And, and, you know, here, and, and this is great, I'm happy. And, uh, I don't mind being yelled at and Leo calling me names and stuff, that's okay. That's what I'm here for. But Leo, have you ever come to talk to me?
What?
Okay? And, uh, you know, if, if, a lot of you here, have you reached out and talked to them?
Well, that's why there's a problem. Like, if we need to reach out to you and tell you what's morally right, then you really not fit to be the mayor, leader of our people.
Not, not, I'm not asking you to reach out and talk to us morally right, if I'm going to have a conversation with you.
But this is the conversation where pastors discussing things that are, have to do, it's not about if you're a Republican or a Democrat.
You're, that's what it is.
Morally right or wrong.
Yes.
So then there should not be a discussion, we just do what's morally right, right? I thought that was, like, that's how the church, right, Mr. Pastor Hall, that's what he would tell us that God says, right? To, to do what's morally right. So then you, you shouldn't even need to ask the community if they're, if we need this, it's just a must.
I think as, as mayor, it's my obligation to give everybody the opportunity to voice their opinions. And that's what I'm trying to do.
Okay, I think the silent majority has voted, been voicing their opinion for over four hundred years, and we're done with it. Chief, I understand that you put in new policies since you've been in, since you've been in office, since you've been the chief. And you explained some of those things, but not one of those things did I hear anything about accountability. That's what the problem is. We want not, no, no job, okay? In the world, at least in America, does the employee get to tell their employer how things are going to be ran? We, as the people of Oleand, are your employer. You guys don't get to tell us how things, I mean, you guys have been doing it, but it sounds like the box is going to stop. We're not going for the same rope, you know? Oh, we'll work with you, we'll take it, we'll do this and we'll do that. No, we're done, we're done, we're tired of the talking. We want change. In order to change something, that means that action takes place. Okay? So now, when you're putting in the policies in, I would like as a citizen to be able to hear something about them being able to be held accountable. Please, trust me, citizens of Oleand, this is not the only place that I've ever lived. My family is one of the first black families in Oleand. But this is where I grew up, I came to Oleand because this was a great place to raise kids. So I fought when I was young. Because I was naive and didn't wasn't educated on how things really worked. I've heard people say, we don't have the problems, Mayor. We don't have the problems that other cities have. We don't, trust me. I think you, I think you, that we don't have those problems. But that doesn't mean that we don't have a problem. So until you guys are ready to like actually sit down with the people, okay? Like people that look like me, people that look like Mr. Hall, people like, like this young lady, this young lady, until you're ready to sit down and talk with us, then what's really going to change? Because you're going to have a bunch of people that don't know if there's a problem, making decisions on how our life goes. Does that make sense, Keith?
Thank you.
Jessica Malone. Jessica Malone.
Jessica?
Hello, can you hear me? I'm back here. Um, first, I just want, there's one thing that I wasn't hearing at the last meeting, and I'm not, I've heard a little bit of it just on here. And that is that we need to acknowledge that the black and indigenous and people of color in our community have a right to be angry. I think as a white person comes out, I'm trying to do better. I sometimes take for granted the fact that I have a black husband and I have black children. So maybe, you know, by, you know, virtue of that, I can't be a racist. And that's simply not true. Every white person in this room is a racist, whether you are so consciously racist or not. You, everyone in this room that is white and in this community, and especially, I am going to especially hold our government and people in power accountable, that you need to take those steps to recognize the, the issues that you have within yourself. That doesn't mean that you have to report to the community that, wow, I just did an implicit bias training for myself and I found out that I am, I have a lot of deep-seated prejudice against this, this, uh, group of people. You don't need to share that information. But unless you are taking those steps within yourself and within the government of Oleand and the county, there is no assurances to people that things are going to change. If you can't recognize the problems within yourself, there's no way you're going to recognize the problems in our local government. Um, you know, so implicit bias, that's something that I am going to hold to the council and to the local government to investigate and explore. As Ms. Harkey has mentioned, there is non-protracted organizations all over this country, including in this community, that are skilled in trainings on implicit bias and recognizing those implicit biases and overcoming them. If we want to do better, we need to do those things, we need to take those steps. And those steps need to be taken before we form this committee or group that is going to review the policies and the procedures of our police department. Um, you know, if we're still holding all of these racist ideas, whether or not we're aware of them in our heads, you're not going to be able to objectively look at the policies and see where change is needed. So I encourage everyone to take those kinds of trainings, do those kinds of steps to better yourself before you're making those policy decisions. And I want to hold our aldermen accountable as well. We're talking about reaching out to the community during COVID, it is very hard. We're limited on the number of people that can gather in a space. Our community is already broken up into discussions called wars. Our aldermen and our alderwomen should be contacting, whether it's going door to door, um, contacting people by phone. You do it on election night, you never do it any other time of the year. You want to call us and tell us you care about our vote, please vote for us, make sure you go to the polls, talk to me in between the elections. Mr. Crawford, that was for you, I am within your ward. I got a call, you stopped at my house, election week, I never see you any other time of the year. You made promises that you do want to talk to us about what we have to say, but we never see you again. You will not count our doors, so you know where we live. It's things like that that happen a lot in the community. We talk the talk, but we don't walk the walk. Just because you're not calling my child, Mayor, doesn't mean you're not thinking it. And I know, because when my child leaves, you'll still say it. My kids are in high school, none of them have plans to stay in this community. Two of them have already left. If you want to build this community and make this community wealthy, a better place to live, you have to be more diehard. you have to be more diverse and inclusive of everyone. And that means people of color, people not from New York, people not from Olean. I'm not from Olean, I moved here twenty years ago. When I first got here, people were not nice to me. They looked at me and, you know, there's this girl, she moved here from out of town, she's coming with this black guy, they're causing trouble. You know, people were not nice to me, people were very mean to me. And it was a few people that did reach out and show me that there are good things about this community, and so I did stay and raised my children here. But sadly, throughout the years, I see why I completely don't want you staying after our children leave. Um, you know, we can do better. And if the people in the community aren't committing that commitment to do better as a resident, you know, what's the point? And I also did kind of put the chief on the spot a little bit for his comments in the paper. Um, I do commend you for the changes that have been made in the police department. Um, it kind of seems like a no-brainer that the people we're gonna give guns to are now finally drug tested, the same way people are going to handle money at Walmart. I mean, that kind of seems like a given. We give these people a gun, these psychological exams, I think should even be given throughout their career. We all know how it's a high-pressure job, and the statistics show domestic violence has been among law enforcement. So, but that statistic alone doesn't make all law enforcement bad, which why those statistics that were given last week about black abortion have nothing to do with this. The same way police violence in their own home has nothing to do with this. This is about the Black community. And we need to realize that, and we need to give them that validation, and we need to let them be angry and let them shout. And I kind of got a little off track there, I'm really sorry. Um, but Chief of Police, you did mention in there, in the article, um, that it was due to the new legislation that has been passed, where you specifically had stated that, please do, sorry, I'm just reading the article. That the legislation, um, you know, is making officers pause on whether or not it's worth it to stop a clean suspect. You know, things like that are very offensive. Um, what are your police officers doing that they're doubting an action to apprehend a suspect might cause them to be liable? I think there's some more issues there, that police are scared of what they're doing, you know, Pastor Hall said clean hands, you know, pure heart. If your heart isn't pure about what you're doing when you're apprehending a suspect, then maybe your hands aren't clean. If you're worried that your actions are gonna have repercussions, maybe it's your actions that should be looked at, not the law, that's causing defendants to be looked at. So I would hope that the Olean Police Department um, is going to enforce the laws that apparently aren't gonna be able to be enforced until things settle down. I mean, that was the exact quote. Penstone has gone all the way to the left, knowing that he expects to see an increasing crime. It's not going to settle down until they allow us to enforce the law. No one's keeping him from enforcing the law. The only thing we're trying to stop is police brutality. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Jan Robie.
Jan Robie.
Uh, the one that prepared the new law act.
Okay.
Evelyn who's?
Evelyn. Up front here, Paul.
Hi, do you need me to add something? Evelyn, and I'm going to comment, checking on my, um, certain comments already done here previously, um. I am going to join the voices that said that they were very disappointed when you said I'm going to consult the silent majority. And I know you're trying to explain what you meant, so that's a good thing, that you're having some kind of reflection about it, but it was shocking. And it was hurting because it was not about the shock, the silent majority. It was about the silent minority, which I don't like the word minority because it means less than, oh, mine's less than anybody. Um, but the silent ones here that have been exposed to abuse in one way or another, especially people like Blacks and people of different ethnicity. So that was a sad thing to hear from you, because I do appreciate your work. I do appreciate it. And I think sometimes you have the right heart. Your voice in the previous meeting, I really don't know your heart, but when you talk, you can see certain things trying to shine through. So in reference to that silent majority, and also touching on the subject of the survey, I think it's offensive to ask the silent people who have not stepped up to take, um, stand about the offensive done to the people who have been marginalized in this community. Uh, I think it's an idea that should be just, um, just let it go. Let it go. Maybe you need data, I don't know what kind of data a survey like that can come, unless you're going to the Black people and they can tell you, "Come to us." Latinos and Brown and, and everybody else here that is from supposedly different ethnicity. Uh, "Come to us, we will let you out." But if you go to the people who have not stepped up and spoken up about the abuse that have been occurring consistently in the community, it's like, I, I really don't understand how that's gonna work, to address an issue that's affecting a specific group of people, which their voices should be heard, and not the people who have not stepped up to defend the people who have been silenced. So on that aspect, I, I want to agree on the other ones that haven't touched on that. There was a question, um, I'm trying to see which name I put. I think it was Katie that posed two questions about, what have you done? She's talking to the people here at the council and, and the mayor. What have you done personally as a self-reflection into addressing your own biases and racism if you have? Most likely you feel you're not racist, and most likely you don't feel you're biased, because we live in a community that's ninety, about ninety-five percent white. So you don't get to put on my color skin. You don't get to put on another darker person's skin and go out the door and experience it. So you're not gonna feel racism, and you're not gonna feel the bias over or in your face, you're not gonna feel it. And in your heart, maybe you're sincere about it. I'm giving you the benefit of the doubt, you're not biased, you're not racist. But you're the silent one. You're complicit to attack me. I am not gonna put you all in the spot to tell me what you were doing, but since Katie brought it up, I pray that you would take that question to heart. And look, you know, self-reflection, like I said at the end of the time, check yourself. Where are you? Where's your heart? Where's your heart? Because does this heart need to say that a survey is gonna come up and give you all the insight that we have to give you? You don't need to go any further. There's no need for a survey, I'm just saying there's no need for a survey. Maybe we could survey, um, why the Black community is poorer than the poorest white person here, maybe we could service that and find out why they get maybe less benefit, less information, less service of any kind, maybe we could survey that. But why a Black person feel, or Latino person feel, or person of color feel that they have been targeted because of the color of their skin? You need to go to the people with color on your skin. That's what you need to do. In reference to, um, the pastor, I love the way Pastor Hall tells us that, all these nice stories, it does start at home. And maybe we are not doing a good job doing that. We're also not doing a good job in our education system. We cannot watch history. History is there and it's documented, we use books that gives it a chapter, and then we move on to the next thing. While the history of the United States has been built on the blood and sweat and life of the Black slaves that were taken from their homeland and brought here by force to the neighbor that other people thought they were supposed to do. So once we put the history back into history and not call it Black history, because it's American history, once we do that and address it, I feel really good. I also wanna address Chief, I think, um, all the things that you were saying that you have been doing, um, drug testing the officers, psychological screening, defense tactics, I, 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 I think that's a good start. I, I don't know how long you've been doing it, I don't know if it's reflected, but this time, it is sad that it has to be addressed at this time. But it's something that is like somebody said a no-brainer. If it was, um, uh, Jessica? I think she said it was a no-brainer. How could you give a person a gun and just, about six months training and send them out in the street? And assume that they're gonna know how to work on this stressful situation and do it in a proper manner, and maybe have mental health issues that they have not been addressed, but sometimes don't even show up. They don't even show up, sometimes we don't even know we have some mental issue until we are confronted with a situation that puts you in a spot that all your presence and your happiness come down, and our biases, and our biases. So I would like to let you know that there are so many other things that we could be doing here in Olean that has not been done. Reaching out to the family, don't do the survey, knock the doors. I think Jessica said, you know, we have some people from the different wards. Knock on those doors. Don't have, don't go knocking on the white people's door. Go to the Black and Brown community, go to them, because I mean, they're not that difficult to find, because it's only like, what, six hundred or some, or some of us here? We're not that difficult to find. And if you don't know where to find them, Pastor over there has a whole list of where you can find people, because everybody goes to his, um, barber shop, they talk there. So ask Pastor, he'll give you a list of the directions, and, or he'll get in contact with them and they could get in contact with you. But the thing is, extend your hand. So that people will not think that this is, um, exercise of duty. We're just like exercising our speech here, and once those doors close, back to business. We don't, that's what we don't want. But we don't want to feel that we're just here talking, expressing our feelings, our concerns, letting you know what, um, what the issues are, which everybody knows what the issue was, how to address them, and then later on, we go back to business as usual and nothing gets done. That is a sense of despair that has permeated this community. Nothing gets done. And while we may be looking at, um, a beautiful community rising, Union Street is getting beautiful, businesses are coming in, everything like that, that is great. But when people don't feel part of it, it is a waste of resources, because they would not feel, um, accepted, they would not feel welcome, and they would not feel that they, um, can make their own business flourish in a place that has marginalized it so, so long. So in, in regards to a plan, uh, uh, of training for the board maybe, there's so much social workers here. Social workers are a good resource we need to go to. They deal with so many things, and they have so many tools they can share with you, that you can, um, come with tactics, even the police could go to a social worker, and, and because there are ways of de-escalating situations and violence and whatever it is that needs to be done in a way that doesn't need to have force. So check your hearts. Do some home, some reflection, am I biased, am I not biased? We're not gonna go after you because you do have, just look, look into your own heart, check your heart, and make sure that when you come back to the next meeting, we have some more concrete answers of the things that we're posing here. Because we're going around in circles, which saying the same thing again, and again, and again, and there's no definite plan, a definite plan is somewhere in the future. But the future for the community, the silent, Black, Latino, Brown community, is today. The future is today, because our future has been long path for us to be expressing ourselves. So we want you to come next week and give us some real information. What are you doing? How are you being implemented? Can we see it now? Not a month, the two for now. And I know there's some things that need long-term time, I'm not talking about those things. I'm talking about the things we can see now. Next week or next meeting on the, whatever, on the, next meeting. Come and say, "I went out to my community, I spoke to the people, and here are their responses." Let them write you a letter or note, if you wanna survey, take yourself. If you don't know what to ask, we could give you some, um, questions. You go to these people's houses, you put their name, their address, and you let them talk, take notes. Sometimes it's better to listen than to ask questions. Listen to the people, and hopefully next time we get together, we have some real concrete answers planned, um, and things in place that we can say, "Okay, you guys are serious about working with us." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're, uh, it's now eight o'clock, it's well after eight o'clock. Um, I will make a, an apology to the community for my choice of words of saying the silent majority. So there's my apology. We've learned a lot tonight. Um, you know, a lot of good comments here tonight. And, uh, you know, definitely, we want, we wanna make the changes and make them meaningful and not just lip service. So we want, we wanna work with the entire community to make these changes that Olean needs. So thank you everybody for coming.
That was just a quick question. I was just really quick, I'm sorry. Um, I, I thought it was odd that, um, I mean, there are people here from all different, some people have lived here all their lives, and some people have just moved here last week. And, and one of the things we're talking about is the relationship between the community and the police. And then way over the corner is that guy, I don't know who he is, and the mayor's saying, and someone mentioned him, and someone said, "Oh, Joe, tell him what you said." Can you do me a big favor? Can that gentleman please stand up and introduce himself to the community? I don't know who you are.
I, I apologize for that also. It is our police chief, Jeffrey Riley.
I mean, he's really important for us to know. Well, if you don't know me, then it's good for you. I mean, they're not having any trouble.
So, so there again, thanks everybody for coming. Um, there again, I, I purely have an open door policy. Uh, if you would like to come to see me, uh, I have no problem with that. And, uh, we will take, we're taking notes on the meeting, and we will take all of your suggestions and comments, and we'll take them to heart. And for those of you, um, I know you probably won't understand this, but growing up in Olean, I came, I come from Italian descent. And my grandfather came over to Ellis Island. And there were several names as kids we were called. And I'm not gonna repeat them. But, uh, so, you know, there has been racism in Olean for a long time. And that, just with, you know, not just with the Black community, with many, many, uh, you know, the Polish people, the Polish towns.
The Irish people.
The Irish people.
Yeah, but the Irish people can get jobs now, and they aren't the ones who are getting hurt by the police. And that's the suggestion of the survey, and he just makes it. Well, a hundred years ago.
One thing, one thing's there.
We can do it.
Thank you. Uh, one thing I do wanna, uh, when we talked about last week, we talked about jobs and, and civil service. Uh, one thing is happening, and this is where you can all help, because you can get to your state leaders. Senator Garell's office, Joe Giglio's office, uh, your county legislators, that would be civil service test. They're extending them out, like, uh, the fire department test. That was extended out for four years. So that means that anyone in the, in the interim who would become available or old enough to take the fire department test, they have to wait until four years. They used to give the test every year. So I guess what I'm trying to say that, in that timeframe, there may be people that take it this year, and then the next year, they, they, more there may be people that take it this year, and then the next year, the, the, more people, young, young people become eligible, that they're not given the opportunity to take that test for, for four years. So these are the things that you can help with by, uh, talking to your state legislators about that, because those are rules that are set by state civil service and, uh, cataracts county civil service. So, yes.
I just wanna make, just wanna say that the gentleman asked the chief to introduce himself, and he said it's a good thing that he did it out there. That's one of the problems, and are we training our officers as guardians of the community or as warriors? Because if it's a good thing that he does the milk now, then that is too bad.
Okay, meeting is over, thank you very much for coming. Uh, we'll be here again next Thursday night, please make sure you're registered, because we are on a limit.